I'm going to call the Planning Board, Vision, and Guts 2023 to order an Emily, could you please read the.
I can. This meeting will be held in a hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person attendance and remote participation in accordance with House Bill number fifty-eight of the one hundred and ninety-third General Court, which extended the government's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGL thirty A or chapter thirty A and section twenty until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast as well, unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in this specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. For purposes of in-person attendance, it sounds like your field will host the meeting in the main meeting room of the Deerfield Municipal Offices. With remote participation, details noted below.
Thank you for that enthusiastic reading, Emily.
Well, I'll do it more poetically next.
All right, okay. So guidelines for the business meeting for the speak one at a time, how your full conduct, be respectful, considerate, courteous, concise, and be recognized by the chair. Let's do a roll call. So Rachel, wait, you're here? Here, Emily Gaylord.
Emily Gaylord here.
Kathy Metrowen. Kathy Metrowen here. Annalee Wolfkorn. Annalee Wolfkorn here. And Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester here.
All right, so we'll do one absence. Andrew Leifson, but I think some France, lucky woman. Yeah. All right, um, let's see, let's go ahead. Do we have any minutes to review? We do not. All right, we will table them to next time, just so everybody, I will have them next time. I'll give them to Amy before I.
Okay.
But yeah, we're working on these together. Okay. Sounds great. Thanks, Rachel. Okay. So I'm going to do, as I said, to be kind to our guests this evening, that we're going to, I think, if everyone agrees, we're going to do the A and R first of the new business. All right, great. So if you'd like to come up to the mic, please. And introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Sherry Strian, River Road, Deerfield.
Okay, if you can speak into the mics. How that works.
Again, hi, I'm Sherry Strian, and I'm on River Road in Deerfield.
Thank you. And Bob, would you like to, can you explain what Mr. Rand is doing?
Maybe you need to put the map up too. Yeah, it's a pretty straightforward. She, she's just dividing her property up. And they're, well, it's all going to be legal law, so I didn't see any issue with it. I didn't delve too deep in it. I checked the frontage in the, the area. I said, I, I didn't have any issues with it.
Yeah, no, that's right.
Okay, no, that's good to know. Has everyone had a chance to take a look? Any questions? Annalee?
I'm sorry, yes, Bob, you mentioned that she's dividing the lot. The application states just the removal of a house and cutting out house and eight point eight seven acres. I guess I don't quite understand the relationship in that.
Amy, attention, as you can put the map up. All right, well, we have the map in front of us.
Yep.
Bob, we're there, you're frozen.
I can hear you.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, she's, she's separating out the piece with the house and barn.
So cutting it, the, the, the frontage piece out and leaving the back and the side piece.
Yeah, but she left herself over two hundred feet of frontage for the back also.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, is that answered the question now? So, I'm sorry, the front piece is River Road piece, and that's staying the same, correct?
Mm-hmm.
No, no.
All the way to the, no.
I, I think maybe it's a little hard to understand because you can't see the whole rest of the lot, the, the lot. The eight acres is being separated as part of a much bigger lot, the boundaries of which you cannot see on that um, map that you have for the AMR. The lot goes way back.
So this part is staying with it. The back part, and they're just cutting out this piece.
Oh, I understand. There's like another sixty acres behind that, a block.
Okay.
To save.
Well, we do that. Okay, all right.
So here, Sherry, my couple, over by you. I will need the Carol Merrill. Yes, please.
I put me get mine. Okay, this is the southern line.
Yep.
And then this one up here is the northern line. That's, I don't, I can't give it, but that runs like by the Sportsman Center.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm leaving two hundred, over two hundred feet with, with the, the frontage under the road with the remaining land. And then we're cutting out this not quite nine acre parcel um, for my use. Well, it's all going to be in my use. What happened is my mother left this to uh, my brother and I by right of survivorship. My brother passed away, and I would like to get my sister, my, his widow, my sister-in-law's name on this property, so that she has the benefit of that at some point.
It's a bit of a flag lot. Did you talk about that, Bob?
Well, as a flag lot, it's got two hundred feet of frontage. I mean, it's not really a flag lot.
Right. But that's the, that's the concept, right? Because it's the big, 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 our back.
Right.
Securing the front house.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yes, thanks, Rachel. Okay, so does anybody, I'm not that we additional questions?
Oh.
I was gonna move that we moved to yours.
Who turned yours?
Let's reach out. Emily, take a vote. Rachel?
I vote yay, yes.
Emily?
Emily Gaylord, yeah.
Kathy?
Kathy Metrowen, yes.
Annalee?
Annalee Wolfkorn, yes.
Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Uh, Denise Mason, yes. So I think we're all set.
Thank you. You're welcome. And then I can go back and pick up the copies or.
Or we can do it right now.
I don't even want to make sure. I would just sign it right now. Is it going to be registered right away?
Yeah. It's just here.
Yeah. I think it's, are there five copies there? She's muted. I think there are five. Yeah, so Bob, I think we're good, unless you want to hang out for the rest of reading? No? All right, thanks, Bob. We don't have anyone else who we can send.
No, this is great.
There you are. I love that. What do you mean, my power? Steve was very. Yeah, well. Well, I was gonna say, I was very good. Me too. That's really funny. And you know what? I had it for a long time, and then it was all the same. Um, Harbaugh. Beautiful name, but really good. Yeah, for us. You guys are over.
Amy, which one do we keep?
Okay, so um, we keep a couple of the papers, and she should take my lar that needs to go to the Registry of Deeds, and I'm sorry, I should have left you out my instructions for the Registry of Deeds, but I'll be happy to email them to you. And then once it's registered, we just like to have the book and page number for our records.
So we'll keep two?
Yeah, we'll keep two.
You're good.
I'm doing so I'm on.
Yeah. It's the thing you're doing. It's the thing we're doing.
Oh, really? So that was efficient. Okay, the next on our business is Old Frontier. I think it's next AMP Solar and yeah, and to my knowledge, I think according to the fire uh, chief, fire commander, saying that there are a few, a few things outstanding. And let's see, according to them, it's a site access and training are the two that he said he could think of. So I think we need more clarification, a better clarification on that, Amy. So I'll talk to you about that again. Sound like clear what the next step is on that?
Yeah, I, I think it's that they, you know, they need to get um, that taken care of, and, and so that the fire department can sign off. But they have done what they need to do with the batteries.
Okay.
It's not just the fire department, what we should, it's all of our conditions that have.
Well, those, those are the two conditions that the planning board set forth. I think that, that they have not done. I mean, if I look, if you look back in the email, I believe it says something, he said some of the conditions of the special permit issued by the planning board are still outstanding.
Right.
So we have to look at our conditions.
Right, right.
So um, I'll take a look at that and then get back, and I'll talk to Amy about that. So I'm not sure whether it's the site access and training, so I'm, I'm not really clear on that, Amy. So I'll, I'll check in with you on that one.
Okay, okay, that sounds good.
Amy, could you send me the conditions so far? I can do it right here. Amy, can you send me the conditions? Because I think it predates when I was on planning boards.
For, for sure.
So I just want to pass them.
Um, sure, what I'll do is I'll, I'll send the decision. I, I thought I it's in there, but I will send the decision for that to everyone, so you can see what it says.
That would be great. Thanks, Amy. Okay, so we'll do that. We'll take a look at that and probably have that on the agenda for the next meeting, just to hopefully clear that up. All right, so let's see, next on the agenda, standard conditions, and these are conditions that, that we work with, and mostly Annalee worked with Karen from PBPC on. So we have a list of the standard conditions. And I think, yeah, so I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at them. Um, but these are, I mean, it's sort of like, it's a menu. So, you know, depending upon what we're looking at, you know, we can take a look at these conditions and see which ones fit. And they aren't necessarily all the conditions here. For instance, for sunny days, we added quite a few more, depending upon what the project is. But I think this is a great start, so we don't have to try and help when we are, yeah, exactly. So I think these are good. So if you want to just take a look, you know, continue to look at these, and then if you think of anything else, then we can add them for our next meeting and just put that on. So does anyone have any questions about conditions? I mean, I think it's a great tool to have. I know that, I know that the cons con has, but I think, how many are there, Amy? They have like, I think fifty-seven different ones to choose from, so.
Seventy-one.
Ours are quite not, not quite as, but still, great having them.
Yeah, but it is very handy. That way, when the decision comes down, um, you know, you can just edit that document a little and toss it right in, and then add anything else that you have that might be a special condition. Um, but it, it makes a very nice base to start with.
Right. Okay, thank you. All right, any questions on that and comments on conditions? We'll move on to the planner. Next steps, and that's to review the job description. And I think that was something that the Personnel Board and Casey worked on, and then took it to the Select Board, and they had some comments or additions. So this is what we have, and I think that Casey did want to send it out to the respective boards to see, see what everyone had to say. So let's see. Just, has everyone had a chance to work through that?
I did. I was curious and maybe noticed, but did we like consult with planners to build? Like, who's reviewed this so far?
To my knowledge, uh, Casey Personnel Board and the Select Board. I don't know. Annalee, do you know?
I started out um, and consulted with four or five, I think, job descriptions for five local.
Perfect. Okay, that, I just wanted to do. That's great. I just wanted to make sure, because I don't feel like part of why we need a planner is I don't feel like we need a planner. That's the big deal.
That's right. I forgot that Casey said that Annalee had put in a lot of work on this prior to, you know, sending it to the Personnel Board. So, and, and I think, you know, if we read it, it is, you know, it's, it's somewhat fluid. And so I think, you know, as far as um, the planners concerned for the planning board, I think that will, you know, we'll probably need the planners' help sometimes more than others. It's like, you know, I don't think it's going to be a twenty-four seven kind of thing, but I think it's going to be great to have the planner to, to look at grants, to work on grants, and still with help of, you know, the administration and some of the volunteers, which I'm one else, to help with grant writing. But um, so I think that'll be really good. And I, you know, I'm not sure when there, I think Casey said that she wanted everyone's words to look at it before it was then actually officially put out. Um, you know, in the different areas.
I am always surprised um, by this, the physical skills involved, like the, the, the detail of that. It's kind of impressive to me.
You have to do that.
I know.
Yeah.
Denise?
How many thousand? Do you know? Say thirty, up to thirty thousand.
Denise?
That's like just holding my two cats.
Um, I had the opportunity, well, to, I attended the Personnel Board, which looked at an earlier edition of the um, job description, and then that job description that was approved by the Personnel Board went to the Select Board. I'm not sure who else. And then that's how this addition came forward. Um, I'm intrigued and would prefer otherwise, but it went through the Select Board, that the first two, well, first, the second and third bullets um, here, no, the first two bullets are grants. And this is planning and economic development, working with the loan grant, um, the land uh, boards. That's kind of not the approach of the other. Interestingly, the other towns often say, boy, their planners more than often earn their money in grant revenue, but their main responsibilities are working with planning. The other piece that certainly was a difference was um, was things like the maintaining a web presence. Um, it sounds like the web, planning board web, then website might now come under a pretty high level. So I don't know, I just, that was, those were two of the largest differences between this and the earlier job description that the.
Oh, that's at the bottom.
Oh, right. You know, Annalee, I mean, when I looked at this, I mean, I don't know whether it's necessarily in order of importance. I think these are just all the different tasks. And then I think, you know, I think there's going to be sort of ebb and flow as, you know, as what's needed. I mean, there are different times of year that the grant, she'll be, he, she will be working on grants uh, more than other times of year. And just as we, you know, when we get a big project, let's say for instance, sunny days, we're best, oh, that's wasn't that wrong. The initial project is big, then I think that we'll be working a lot closer with the planner. But so I think, I think, you know, the way I look at it, it's really fluid.
But it's not inappropriate, because it gets the reorder of bullet points, potentially. I think that like, if you are thinking about it from an applicant perspective and understanding this is not an employer's market, it's an applicant market. There is something to be said for making our job description competitive.
Okay.
And, and maybe we do want to come up with, and that, you know, I might want to introduce some language of like, and maybe we can't do this. I don't know what the rules and regulations are from the first thing I'll order, but like, it's a really exciting time to be. We've got a lot going on. There's the campus, there's a bunch of new initiatives. They could be a real like steward, some new economic development. Um, and it would be kind of exciting to see some of that make it here in terms of if, if the planner are coming from even within the valley, but not from Deerfield. It may or may not be.
Right.
And just also to check that Emily's, I mean, the second bullet point was the one that lists grant application that, you know, more in the suite of um, in a suite of job tasks, right? And so perhaps even just swapping those around, so that it is clear that uh, I mean, grant writing would be relative to the valley, relative to um, the activity of.
And is this different? Posted, the job posting versus the job description are two different things?
Oh, yeah, no, that, that, all of this wouldn't be posted.
Also then.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know. That's what, you know, I mean, you can't, you can't post this entire thing. It would be, you know, it costs million dollars to post this. No, but, oh, well, depending on where you post them, different ads, but I don't know. I guess that's a good question to ask, Casey. But you know, what um, what I think might be helpful is, Emily, for what you just said, if you can send any kind, any comments, and Annalee, if you can send the comments, and Rachel, any comments, just send them to me, and then I will, I'll warm them on, you know, just. I'll warm them on to Casey.
And then I also have some.
I had my hand up.
That requires some good um, places to post them, the players.
I think, did you send that to Annalee already? Because I think Annalee, I summarized it with some other. And I can already go to Casey.
Okay. Excellent. So then um,
Actually, I think I'll have to forward that again, because now that I recall, I think it just, it bounced back, because I think there were some issues. Yeah, okay.
Do you?
No, I haven't. I, no, it bounced back, and I sent it to Casey, so I'll do that again.
It may also be Annalee that works with others in administrative office to maintain this web presence, that the web presence, I agree. But the idea that the, a planner would be in charge of, that could be, yeah, I know. And so.
That would be another job description.
Right. Right, so it may be that, that, that's less of a bullet point than, don't look point than it is maybe back in the suite of bullet points that is communication, you know, coordinating communication with the, I don't know.
So Kathy Metrowen here. So, so this is pretty complex, and, and there's certainly depth to this role and this position. So it looks as though this individual report by and large directly to the town administrator and the Select Board. So that's their key primary, um, the first place to go.
I don't think they're reporting to the Select Board. I think they're reporting to Casey to make sure that Casey's Select Board is. Yeah.
Yeah, so that's their umbrella. Um, I mean, in, I would, I would agree um, with Emily, this is, you know, this is sort of innovative, and this is a great opportunity to get in, and, and a community that's really has some great ideas. But it is, it is a, it's, it's a lot of information to um, sort of manage in an independent fashion. So really looking at who their contact people are within the illustration will be helpful for them to get existent direction um, that.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, so the, the individual that this person will communicate in a primary fashion with will give consistent information, consistent language, so that they're not getting information from this place if they're protecting language to be able to do this very comprehensive job. Like, I, I use the analogy of puppies, you know, five people training one from the puppy, they're going to put an untrained dog, right? So i- i- in support of this individual who has this job, it's like, right, being important.
One, I think the way it's planned, that case is the main point of contact, and it would go through her, so it's not like I'd be talking directly or anyone, anyone else would be talking directly to the planner, go through Casey, and then she would, you know, facilitate, facilitate that. So, yeah, so any, any um, questions?
Yeah, and I'm happy to, I just want to know with the posting, like, I'm assuming this is going to go out on like various job boards and things like that. I just want to know if the language is going to be different than that, and it's though that feels important to me, in terms of attracting the right kids.
Right, I'm not sure. That's a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is important enough that we at the planning board want to have follow-up at our meetings on what's happening. It's the only thing.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, good.
Denise, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, because I've had my hand up and I haven't like, don't exist over here. Um, I just want to know if this person would be attending our meetings, because it's not in the job description.
I, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I think on an as-needed basis, but I think it's probably not, not the best use of the person's time to attend our meetings. I don't know.
But to Kathy's point, there might be a argument for putting like occasional evening and weekends, like, I mean, it's like, they're definitely very responsible.
That was something that was in the original job description that went to the Personnel Board.
It's your underwork environment. It's majority of work is performed in the office, may be required to work remotely, normal business hours, if necessary, and flexible work schedule hours. So no, I mean, obviously, I think when, when we have a larger project, but for tonight, to have a planner sit in on this meeting would be total waste of time. Yeah, for that. Oh, that's true. But yeah, so I think, I think all these comments are really good, so if you can send them to me, today's Monday, Wednesday, reasonable amount of time. I think probably pretty quick, how about by Wednesday? Yeah, you can send them to me by Wednesday, then I'll get them, I'll, you know, compile them, and then send them to Casey and CC, the Select Board.
Right, because I believe that the next meeting, the Personnel Board is in um, it's on the twelfth, potentially.
Oh, right.
And so if, if it needs to go through the Select Board again before the Personnel Board, it probably, I mean, otherwise, we're talking about a lot for the Personnel Board.
No, we just send it directly to the Personnel Board. I mean, can Casey?
Um, I'll ask. Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll send this back to Casey when she, she'll do what she's going to do. I mean, I don't know, um, when is the next Select Board, the twelfth? Oh, Select Board, I. Yeah, I mean, they just, you know, when, she's one last Wednesday, I don't know, I just want to speak. I'll find out. I'll speak with Casey and see. Yeah. Who's going to look at, when they're going to look at it. And I suppose that, yeah, that's true, for the changes they have to vote the man at the meeting. This one. Or if they did it individually, if she just sends it out individually, that's fine. I mean, she could, okay. All right. I'll check on that. Tomorrow. Okay. But it's a good start.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So let's see. Next on the agenda is, excuse me, master plan phase one. A whole lot. I think we were, oh, is everyone here on that meeting with Peggy? So, okay.
No, I was not.
You weren't? Okay. I just had some notes. I mean, I think that I think in the end we decided that we probably won't be working on that until 2024 because we're finishing up, um, need, uh, our bylaws, chapter 179. And so I think we also need grant funding for that to determine what approximately $30,000. Is that it? Okay. So we'll be, hopefully we'll have a planner by then, the planner can write that grant or, you know, we'll work on that together. Um, but I think the first step in doing that, excuse me, is going to do a, um, uh, send out a survey to the community in some way, shape or form, online and, you know, in person. We spoke about that. And so I think so the main points, we want to have, we definitely want to help seniors help, help filling out the survey. So maybe we can, you know, figure that out over the senior center. Um, we'll be having some focus groups, the master plan, and master plan was done 20 years ago. So it's, um, we really need to update that. Um, so there's a fair amount of updates specifically for energy and climate. And then let's see, we want to look at it through the lens of resiliency. And we could potentially apply for community one stuff next year for that. So that's pretty much what I have in there. So we'll just table that for now and then we'll revisit that as we, you know, get into 2024. Just count quickly. Okay. So master plan, anybody have any questions on that? Comments? No? Oh, okay. All right. Chapter 179 review update. Our next meeting with Peggy Sloan is June 26th at 6:00 PM. That's just virtual meeting. And let's see, we did that through, uh, so we'll, okay, so I'll have to ask to have that meeting posted. And I mean, we really did, I mean, I didn't even look to see how much we got through, but it wasn't a lot. There's so much, you know, there's a lot to go through, but we did. And I think in the meantime, I don't think if you could refresh my memory, did Peggy say she's going to send this, any updates or not? She's just going to wait. Okay. She's going to wait till we go through all of it and then send us an update. Okay.
When is that meeting? I'm sorry, the next one?
I'm sorry, June 26th. Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, that's another Monday night, six o'clock.
Okay.
So. Yeah. So she'll be doing that. And I'm trying to think, what else? Is there anything else with that?
Any of that get through it?
Well, yeah, I mean, we just, we just have to get through it. That's true. It's interesting.
A reminder, email from. Here on, like, are you getting?
I'll send you.
I think. Yeah, okay. Okay. I'll, now I'll be stuck in my head till then, but just.
I'll send a reminder. Should we do that? We have our 69 meetings. So I remember everything. Right. Okay. All right. Yeah. So in the meantime, um, I'm trying to think where we've stopped. I think I could place folder where we stopped. And oh, I didn't. No, I didn't. Okay. Yeah. If you want to continue coming through that, and if you have any other questions, we'll go through that as Peggy continues. Yeah, that's a lot of light reading.
So just, okay, yeah. So I will, I'm kind of ordering, like thinking about where I'm going next. And I think in terms of meeting notes, I'm going to go backwards. I need to say this, but I'll do those meeting notes so that we're ready for the 26th. How does that sound? So, um, cause those are fairly detailed and will help you to remember what we, you know, you have, I have my notes that are always same, but when I do it on the, it's easier, you don't see.
There was so much.
Yeah, but we were really kind of, it was ordered.
Yes.
Other numbers. The number seven.
Gosh, okay, that was a great Rachel. Thanks. Okay. So let's see chapters. All right. We're just moving right along. So the next on the agenda, the short term rentals. We were talking about this. So Emily, when we, when we had that, I know we had that on the agenda for last time, but there was so much that we didn't cover. And so the short term rentals, are we talking about Airbnb fees? I mean, I'm not.
I was remembering, actually, I think things that was on the agenda last time was because Furco has sent out a memo to all Furco members saying that they had done some research and that many of, that they had additional information for towns, but also that towns may want to look at updating their short term rental pieces. But as I recall from a conversation with Peggy, Peggy was kind of feeling that that should wave and tell that this, what we're doing now is more the technical review, right?
More of it.
Technical, not necessarily, um, bringing up new issues or things that might be a little bit controversial.
Well, plus we did do some of that when we did the, um, ADUs, you know? Cause we did, we did address short term rentals with a 30 day. Cap.
True.
But. I mean, I, she talked, we talked with her, with Peggy about that. About, you know, when a committee.
Certainly. I mean, some towns that are doing a lot with like board health oversight and inspections to make sure kitchens are clean and then others are not doing much of anything. So it is sort of a decision point. If, in fact, our short term rental bylaws do need to be updated and it sounded like Peggy thought they should.
But didn't she feel like, let's just get through it? Sorry, Kathy, Andy.
I can hear you. I mean, even though you weren't using the mic. So thank you.
My voice per chat.
Well, that's cool.
Um, but Peggy's advice, I think, right, is just to get through it. Make sure that we're like technically where we should be there 2023. And then we can say, all right, let's go back to this one and this one and this one. And make sure that there's like values alignment with the town and things like that. Beyond just like, is this technically right or is this dated? Cause I think a lot of what we're learning in the conservation section is just that it's dated. Like it's just, we know more now. So we need to get it into.
You know, that, no, no, I think I do. I think, I think we, what we did talk about, I think you're correct, that we get through all the technical and then as we go through, we can, um, flag ones that are more specific that we want to go back and spend more time on. So that would be. Okay. So we can sort of put that, we can put that on hold and revisit that after we finish 179. Okay. Great.
And I think that she also said to do the same with things that like we can't necessarily enforce, but we can say like, suggest. So like, um, building like efficiency standards and things like that and need those and saying like, we prefer these certain things, but we can't necessarily enforce that people do that. And that was on the list too.
And that, that's just job, I remember too, because I did say that about enforcement. She said, well, if you have that and you have it written down where people can refer to it that way, we've got, we've got some, you know, we can enforce it. Whereas if it's not written down, we can enforce it. So, okay. All right. Well, we'll keep that on. Um, but do that just at a later date? Okay. So let's see. Uh, the next one is, and I think Amy, Amy spoke about this and she said it's really helpful and she did this for the cons comm and acceptance of e-signatures. So I'm going to. That's another, that's another thing that the cons comm did. So if Amy has our e-signatures, then sometimes, I mean, obviously for A and Rs, we'd better come and do that. But other times, if it's something that, uh, she needs done pretty quickly and it's difficult for someone to get in, it's nice if she has permission to use our e-signature. Sure. So.
It's really nice. As it, it's really nice for, uh, when I have to do, um, continuation forms, because a lot of times the people aren't at the meeting. This has happened a lot. And if I can just get e-signatures from them and, um, it just makes life easier.
Okay. So I mean, that the, uh, Jugo Planning Board here, I recognize and accept provisions of NGL 110G regarding the use and acceptance of electronic signatures. And that its members will henceforth execute documents either with electronic signatures or writing e-signatures and that both will carry the same legal weight effect.
Emily Gaylord, second. All right. And we'll take a vote. Rachel Boney, Rachel Boney, yes. Emily Gaylord, Emily Gaylord, yes. Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Denise Mason, yes. Great. Okay. Well, set. So we'll just wait for you to tell us what you need, Amy.
Yeah, great. Basically I just need that vote and then I, um, write that into a letter to, um, and then I take the letter and have it, uh, registered or recorded at the registry of deed. And then once that's done, the e-signature has become legal. So that's, that's pretty much all I needed was for you guys to vote on that. Um, as, as stated.
So Amy, do you need us to send you our email signatures?
Um, no, I'm trying to think, um, usually what happens is I prepare an Adobe document for signatures and what happens is it will go out to you and there will be um, a spot for your signature. And I don't know if you in Adobe have to like choose a signature. Um, I, you don't send me anything. Basically you'll get the document and, um, I.
He doesn't just use our signature. We, we, it's, she sends it around to all of us and we.
It's like a doc.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Great.
Great. Thanks, Amy. Okay. Let's see. Where are we next? Any other business not reasonably anticipated? Open burning? No. Okay. Public comment. I don't see the public here. No?
Okay. Can I just say one thing that occurred to me? I just want to share this with you. Um, Peggy mentioned something that kind of triggered me in our last meeting. It was about, um, we drive through. Which by the way, that lacquer drive through has been a significant, um, bit of regulation that has, you know, prevented Princeton's drive through reference in our town. Um, anyway. And she mentioned that it was, um, really popular basically with other towns because of the ease and convenience for seniors to drive through and get, so to make it just for pharmacy. That was one, uh, specific suggestion that she made in the last, to make it particularly strong for, for. I, I just want to put out there that we are not just pro seniors here, that that is a, an incredible boon to families with small children. And that if we don't start talking about what matters to families with small children as well, we are not doing the right thing. And I think we get very trapped by this. It's very political. Um, it becomes, yes, we're all looking at the senior world, but in fact, without our young people, we are and, and we regularly as a nation and as a town, we step over small children. We just say that's the job of their parents. And so I, I really woke up the next morning and just barely lit up about it because if I had had drive through when my children were small, when they're sick and you're alone and you're trying to get medication to your sick child with your other two children, hopefully not getting what it was that it was. So anyway, that, that, that could be in a very political moment.
I think that's a really good point, Rachel. And I think, you know, we do, we we've had a lot of conversations about seniors, you know, for a lot of different reasons, because we need a senior center. We know that. We're working on it. And it's not just the town of Deerfield, it's town of Wateley, it's the town of Suddenland. Believe me, I've been down in the, deep in the trenches with that one. But you're right. We can't forget that. I mean, understanding that the, um, let's see, the population of Deerfield, I think approximately 45% of Deerfield is over the age of 50, 55, but it doesn't mean to say it's always going to stay that way. And we do have, even though I'm a senior, I'm always notice, she's been young.
Well, just think, so I, I, and I keep, let's be honest, it's not like senior center or an elementary school. That really isn't the way it works. But I just think in the rhetoric, we get very locked into that and we are an aging town and that's great. And, but and that all is important, but we're not putting in the cares and concerns of young families then into our, into our bucket. So anyway.
I think with the planning board, one thing that we can be mindful of and committed to is usually when you do something to want help, one part of the population helps somebody else, right? So having drive through capability helps seniors and it helps your family. It doesn't have to be in order. Also like investing in our schools, being more really good for our property values. It gives us greater longevity of wealth and intergenerational wealth, right? So like there's reasons to invest in schools beyond if you have children in the school systems. And I think if we can be thinking, especially as a planning board, equitably and collectively and how we're all pulling in the same direction, we're going to get somewhere a lot faster. It is better. And I do think that the, and I know this, you know, this is a last time meeting and when we have meetings and things like that. I think part of the reason we get locked in and this is very much from personal experience, it's very hard to purposefully in this town if you have young children.
Hard to do that.
Right. Yeah. And so listen, I've got a very helpful partner at home, but I'm very lucky and I've only got one kid. And I think if I had two, there's no way I'd be sitting at this seat right now.
I agree.
Emily? Just, Emily, just thinking, I'm preaching to the choir. How can we gently get this through that?
And I thought about it at that moment. And actually, the part of the reason I woke up the next morning is I was thinking about it as she was saying it. And I was thinking, um, that in fact, that's just how she's viewing it. And we don't have to take that up one way or the other, you know, whether we are. Is, is that important? I mean, I can tell her next time.
Obviously that sense that she was saying it in a like.
No, no, no.
She's aware that this is a hot topic and people are.
I'm, but I'm just, yes, it's a hot topic, but it's a hot topic. A lot of it is because the rhetoric is around senior.
It's the lens that she was working for.
And I think that, um, I think it, I think, I think it's a national problem. It's not Deerfield. And, um, and so I, I, I just want to keep it live and grass that we are not just concerned about, we're concerned about, like if you look at ADUs and Kathy, right? We talked about this, like ADUs where people were concerned about bringing children into the schools. Hello? Like, yeah, that's what we do as a nation. That's what we, that's what we're about. And, um, there are going to be families, families with young children are going to look at those ADUs for heaven's sakes. Of course they are because the, the property values are really expensive. Those are the very people who can't afford to buy a house. Seniors actually are living in those houses, right? So what we kept talking about was how we can help seniors to live in their houses longer. And, and I, so I, I, I said, well, good, there's one goal, but there are other goals too. And one is to create housing that's available for young families to, to live in a nice area with a good school.
So I was going to just jump in quick because this ADU, I mean, back in 1970, 1980, it was an in-law apartment and that afforded my mother, who was widowed with six young children, the opportunity to have someone else living in the house that she could talk with, that she was not alone with all her kids. We weren't talking politics with my mother, but this person that lived in our house was. There was a couple that called it graduate school, right? Um, so the multi. There were a couple that called it graduate school, right? Um, so the multi you know, facet of reasons why the ADU is important, why supporting families with young children is important, why supporting our seniors is important, is the, is the ethos of a healthy community, right? And, and as Emily said, everything we can do to move in that direction is positive. So I would agree, though, there is a, this sort of political button about how do we support everybody, and in, in doing that, it's inclusive, so I think in talking to Peggy, we, we just voice that honestly. Like, yeah, it's gonna help, you know, when I got up and I was raining out, when my boy was born, I heard it was four and a half, it was a horrible day, I was in and out of my car fifteen times a day in rain. Right, I mean, so whatever we can do to sort of mitigate the challenge in whatever capacity it presents a family, yeah. And I think, I think that's really important, that's why I'm really happy to have Emily on the planning board, because she is a different generation, and I think it's really important. No, it's really important to have more, you know, to, I'm really happy we were able to participate, because when I, when my kids were young, my husband worked at night a lot, so I had to get a babysitter for every single thing I did, which is difficult, so if I had all that money, you know, I'd be on permanent vacation. Well, actually, um. The tenure, because honestly, but anyway, thank you, Rachel, because I think that's a really important point, and.
I think it's an important point, and it's also an important um thing for us, as a planning board, when we're planning, to be thinking about who we're planning for. And that really, the demographics are much less important, if it's good for the community we should be in favor of that.
I think that was a really, really good reminder, so thanks, and so.
I, I just wanted to say one thing, and that is this push for a senior center is to me it's not the direction I would like to see the town go, I mean, I, I think we should go into a community center, so you're serving everybody, and um
Yeah, it is going to be that, Kathy.
Good, because I keep hearing about a senior center, senior center, but I wish we could change the language.
But, but we can't change, we can start talking.
We are, we are changing the language, and when I do, do a report on CCI, well believe in on that, because that, that is a conversation.
It's really not, we use that.
Yeah, oh, just like we changed.
I mean, I've heard some people talk about it, but I'm still hearing senior center, senior center, senior.
Until there is one. But it, it, it's, it's just more complex, because it's not just Deerfield, it's, it's three towns, so we, trust me, we are actively working on that, so, and good segue into reports, so.
Reports on senior housing?
Excuse me.
No. I think it's really important, that's why.
Uh, that probably, Chris said, is that um we, it's in public knowledge right now, that we're looking at the possibility of the outer church, San Juans.
San Juans, okay.
As that being the possibility for uh locating senior housing, and so uh, senior housing is, we're considering appraisal of the land. There's probably a really good possibility that it would be out of our range, um, as, um um, as, what is it?
I'm not sure, I, I think, I think we um.
The money that we could get from CPA.
Yeah, the CPA is.
Yeah, but anyway, it's a time.
So, and do you have any time to build there, with that gain, and appoint buying it for the house, for the building, or buying it for the land?
Both.
Both.
All. Yeah.
Currently under four-H classification? San Juans? What was San Juans?
Yes.
Hmm.
Yeah.
What is four-H?
The four-H farm. Yeah, the four-H. Oh, oh, four, oh, oh, four-H, you know what? I, I think it may be, I think that the individual effort just did, which is that I don't know. I don't know, well, that would be to continue.
Okay.
Okay. Other, any other?
I guess I could say local cultural council, um, we're now in our grant cycle, so everything was approved over the winter, and now people will be carrying out the funded projects. But I will say, while this is relevant to planning boards, maybe a venue problem.
Mm-hmm.
We.
I'm just betting on.
Nowhere. And so that community center, in these I would love to see a venue for some of our recent local cultural.
Yeah, all right, so, okay, so that leads us into, we just admitted, I think, working with Casey and grant writer Alice Rich Lewis, who's wonderful. And we submitted the Community One-Step Grant, and it's a pre-construction grant for the eighteen twenty-one building, which is the church here, and let me tell you, it's a lot of work, getting estimates on, on different things, everything that needs to be done to that, but at any rate, um we got it up to, I think it's seven hundred something thousand with an escalation for about, it's just under a million dollars, so hopefully we get that grant, we're gonna be well on our way, and that is for a senior services community center. And it's not just for seniors, it is to do exactly what you want, it could be a venue, we could hold um, you can hold plays there, you can hold dinners, I mean, all sorts of different things, all the different uh community organizations like the Beekeepers Association, uh, the BFW, uh, the Women's Club, they don't, they really don't have a place to I think the only two places are Holy Family or the Polish Club, that's pretty much it, you know, so so anyway, so we've got, I mean, we worked really, really hard on this grant and getting information, so um, we've got support from uh Jim McGovern, from Natalie Blake, from Joe Commerford, from all the towns, and from the board of oversight for the senior center.
So which buildings, which number is it?
The eighteen twenty-one?
Eighteen twenty.
Yeah, the church.
Yeah.
So, so that's going on.
Construction grant?
It's a pre-construction, because we can't, you can't do construction until there's a lot that has to be done, we're gonna raise the building, we're gonna change new foundation, we're gonna dig out the dirt, we're getting rid of the old tiding system, we're gonna be putting in um uh splits, new web systems, um new windows, I mean, name it, but we can't do anything until it turns old, not until, so you can't do, you can't build it until all of that is taken care of, so. Anyway, so that, now we just wait, because we won't hear anything until, I think, latter part of October, early November, and once we get the grant, I'm hopeful. Then um we would get that money in January, and we'd start breaking, you know, doing stuff in the fall, uh, the spring of twenty twenty-four. So, so that's going on. Next thing is, we've got the parade that's happening on the seventeenth, and I did, we made a banner for CCI, we made a banner for the select board, so we're and it's gonna be on a hay wagon, so, that's pretty exciting. The other thing is, we, we, we got this grant about a year ago, but unfortunately, since um the park is no longer on the table, we had to change change gears a little bit, and we'll be putting, uh, we've got funding we just got funding approved from the select board to hire an engineer so that we can do uh crosswalks and beacons across from Frontier, and also across from the library. And then I think she uh got a grant to do the same across from Pleasant Street, so that's gonna be really helpful in slowing down traffic, because it's such a dangerous area around Frontier. And so that's happening. Let's see, what else? Library building committee, I don't know if anyone is here uh for the presentation, but that's really going well, I'm on that building committee along with Tim Hiltshire and Julie Chelpa and others. And um, I think we're getting to the point of finalizing the design, I think it's really nice, the architect is wonderful. The O K M owner's project manager is great too. Um, he's, so.
Another man there.
Yes.
Yes, that was always, that was always an issue, that was always a hope that the library.
Yeah, because they will have, if you look at it, you can close off most of library, and at night there will be a meeting room that would be open, um, I think availability to kitchen, of course, restrooms, and I think that seats about eighty people. So that's nice, but unfortunately, I don't think it's the kind of thing where you can say, I want to have a meeting there every month. Yeah. Because, like, yeah, anyway, but I think that's great, so.
You know, if someone wanted to do a Beekeepers thing, or something, yes.
Yeah, so they can do that, and that, I believe, I'm not sure we're, we're breaking ground on that, I think that's somewhere between October, Jan, and I'm not really clear on that. And the last one, what I have, is this Thursday here, June eighth at sixteen, there's gonna be a public meeting on the Leary Lot, which is, if you don't already know, it's the parking lot. That's, okay, everyone knows that parking lot. And so. Here is. Here is Mary. Okay. Well, I, well, you definitely have to come to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's all I know, and I think it's Berkshire Design will be presenting the plan, I guess they did new plans on landscaping and what's happening. What time are they doing? Um, six P M. here, I mean, I think it's hybrid too. But we did, um, we did a trade, we did a land, uh, land swap with um with the new people.
We, we, we.
Oh, wow. No, not the, the new one. With the hand shop.
Yeah.
A land switch with cam shop, so what's gonna happen is you um you enter in on North Manny, but then you exit on Allen Street, so it'll be better than that. And then hopefully Berkshire Brew will eventually put their beer garden, so it'll be adjacent to the parking lot, so that would be there too. So that's, that's a meeting on Thursday, and that's all I got. But that's a lot.
It is. The three hundred and six. The three hundred parade was one of the hottest days of that year. And then there were like water stations all along the, and people were just fainting. Like, fainting fest, it's my memory, I was very young at the time.
You're like two.
Yeah, well, barely. And I remember the whole parade, like, that was really.
Oh, my gosh. Well, the parade, as far as, as far as I understand, it's gonna take about two hours.
I know.
So I'm really, we're just sitting on a hay wagon, two hours.
We're in a pack.
Yeah.
It's gonna be nice, right? It's not gonna be that.
Purr songs.
Yeah. Well, there you go. We're in a pack with a.
All right. So that's, that's that for tonight. I don't think there's anything else.
Can I move that we adjourned? It is eight forty-two.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven forty-two, sorry, sorry, sorry.
I mean, we've never
Emily Gaylord second.
Emily Gaylord, yes. All right, um, Rachel Blaine.
Rachel Blaine, yes. Emily Gaylord, yes.
Emily Gaylord, yes.
Our next meeting is.
Yes.
Maybe Matt?
Matt said yes.
So our next meeting is June twenty six.
Yes, June twenty-sixth, and I, I will send out a reminder.
Okay.
If you could.
All right, wow, so meeting adjourned, meeting adjourned.